We'll call this meeting of the Silver City Town Council to order. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands one nation, under God, and equal to all.
Thank you, and if I could ask Counselor Cook to read our mission statement.
The mission statement for the town of Silver City. Silver City is the hub of an inclusive community settled within a small town that through guided growth honors and preserves its historical, cultural, and natural heritage while facilitating jobs, health, and educational resources such that the residents and visitors may enjoy and protect the recreational opportunities of the area in a high quality of life.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Proclamations, and I have three of them tonight. We're going to start with the Child Abuse Prevention Month in Silver City for April 2012, and if I could get you to meet me at the podium.
So proclamation, whereas we all have responsibility as individuals, neighbors, community members, and citizens of Silver City to help create healthy, safe, and nurturing experiences for our children, and whereas, safe and healthy childhoods help produce confident and successful adults, and whereas, child abuse and neglect often occurs when people find themselves in stressful situations without community resources and they do not know how to cope, and whereas, the majority of child abuse cases stem from situations and conditions that are preventable in an engaged and supportive community, and whereas, child abuse and neglect can be reduced by making sure every family has the support they need and deserve to raise their children in a healthy environment, and whereas, it is recognized that no one person can do everything, but that everyone can do something, and together we can create change for the better, and whereas, effective prevention programs succeed because of partnerships among agencies, schools, religious organizations, law enforcement agencies, and the business community, and whereas, displaying a blue ribbon in April will serve as a positive reminder that together we can prevent child abuse and keep children safe. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, Mayor of the town of Silver City, do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Silver City, and I urge all citizens to engage in activities that strengthen families and communities to provide the optimal environment for children to learn, grow, and thrive so that all children have the benefit of happy and healthy and safe childhoods.
Thank you, Mayor, Counsel. I did want to mention, I did bring some brochures that have a phone number for a hotline. It's called Town Safe. Town Safe. And I'll put these brochures in the lab. Thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you. The next proclamation is for Sexual Assault Awareness Month. So whereas, Sexual Assault Awareness Month is intended to draw attention to the fact that sexual violence is widespread and has public health implications for every community member, and whereas, rape, sexual assault, and sexual harassment impact our community as seen by statistics indicating that one in four women and one in 20 men in New Mexico will experience rape or attempted rape in their lifetime, and whereas, we must work together to educate our community about what can be done to prevent sexual assault and how to support survivors, and whereas, staff and volunteers at Silver Regional Sexual Assault Support Services encourages every person to speak out when witnessing acts of violence, however small, and whereas, with leadership, dedication, and encouragement, there is compelling evidence that we can be successful in reducing sexual violence in Silver City through prevention, education, increased awareness, and holding perpetrators who commit acts of violence responsible for their actions, and whereas, Silver City Town Council strongly supports the efforts of national, state, local partners, and of every citizen to actively engage in public and private efforts, including conversations about what sexual violence is, how to prevent it, how to help survivors connect with services, and how every segment of our society can work together to better address sexual violence. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, Mayor of the town of Silver City, join anti-sexual violence advocates and support services programs in the belief that all community members must be part of the solution to end sexual violence. Along with the United States government and the state of New Mexico, I do hereby proclaim April 2012 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you very much. Just thank you, everyone. I'm talking to the microphone. This April, we had several different events going on for Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and I know April's pretty much over with, but on Friday at 6:00 PM at Golf Park, we will have 15 minutes of silence for all victims of crime, so no matter what form of crime it was that they were victims of, we asked the community to come out to Golf Park and help just join in that 15 minutes of silence. Yeah, sorry, 15 minutes of silence.
The next proclamation is Children's Mental Health Awareness Day. It's a proclamation whereas addressing the complex mental health needs of children, youth, and families today is fundamental to the future of New Mexico, and whereas, the need for comprehensive coordinated mental health services for children, youth, and families places upon our community a critical responsibility, and whereas, it is appropriate that a day should be set apart each year for the direction of our thoughts toward our children's mental health and well-being, and whereas, young children exposed to five or more significant adversities in the first three years of childhood face a 76% likelihood of having one or more delays in their cognitive, language, or emotional development, whereas, with help from families, providers, and the community, young children can demonstrate resilience when dealing with trauma, and whereas, the New Mexico Behavioral Health Collaborative is in its eighth year of a 10-year process to streamline behavioral health services and to promote recovery and resiliency through support services across the state in an effort to build healthy families from infants to adults, and whereas, the New Mexico Behavioral Health Collaborative, member of Children, Youth, and Families Department, cares for and advocates on behalf of mental health needs of children, youth, and families in our community, and whereas, the National Mental Health Association, the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the New Mexico Behavioral Health Collaborative, and New Mexico's Children, Youth, and Families Department observe Children's Mental Health Awareness Day on May 9, 2012, to raise awareness and understanding of children's mental health. Now therefore, I, James R. Marshall, Mayor of the town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim May 9, 2012, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Day, and urge all citizens and all agencies and organizations interested in meeting every child's mental health needs to unite on that day in the observance of such exercises as will acquaint the people of New Mexico with the fundamental necessity of a year-round program for children and youth with mental health needs and their families.
The wake of May 9, we will be having some events. On May 12, we will be having an event that involves youth in partnership with the Wellness Center and some local mental health providers, and we will get that information out to the public, and so we hope to invite you and see you downtown on May 12.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is public input. I remind you that you have five minutes to speak, and if you're looking at me, I'll give you a one-minute warning. And the first person up looks like Jan Goldberg referenced the noise ordinance.
My name is Jan Goldberg, and I live on between 8th and 7th on A Street. On Friday evening, we had music that I feel was way too loud, and the rude language could be heard all the way up on 12th and Mississippi, not to mention over off of 19th and Juniper, the music was being heard. They closed half of Pope Street, which is an artery for downtown, I consider, and most people that come in from out of town use Pope Street, they'd close that off by a special permit that is unrestricted, that is given out by our Chief Reynolds. And it seems that the noise ordinance is, I believe, at 10 o'clock, they could at least tone down a bit, and our own Blues Fest doesn't get that loud. I would also like to say that I noticed that on the dance floor, that there were less than 15 people on that dance floor dancing with that loud music, with the obscenity, and I just didn't understand how many people were in discomfort with the noise, and they really didn't have the individuals to support that, or the, you know, the people that go there to eat or party or whatever. So I have a real concern about that, and was just wondering if it's going to continue for the Blues Fest. Because of Pope Street being so important to downtown, I believe last year they closed both directions on Pope Street for the Blues Fest. So that's all I want to say about it. I'm just not happy about it, and will continue to honk my horn. All right, thank you.
Next is Brendan, who referenced Downtown Silver City Merchants Association.
Good evening. My name is Brendan Sorogreen. I'm a youth development specialist at the Wellness Coalition, and I'm here to introduce the New Downtown Merchants Association. It is a group of individuals, merchants, and landowners of the Historic Downtown Association, or District, excuse me, and we are trying to stimulate awareness of businesses and services available in Silver City, particularly the downtown services. We are trying to unify businesses, recognizing that there is strength in numbers. We are currently representing roughly 30 different organizations and businesses. Those businesses range from restaurants, art galleries, massage therapists, and different service providing agencies, including the Wellness Coalition. Any and all downtown business owners or landowners are more than welcome to join us, and we encourage them to join us. We believe that there is a lot of change that can happen downtown to benefit the entire community, not just the downtown community, and we think that this is a great starting point to begin to open up communication between the greater community and the merchants of downtown. We're trying to get at least 60 members. We're aiming for anywhere between 75 and 100 members, the more the better, and we are also trying to get a centralized and maintained email list and phone contact list for downtown merchants, so that way communication on a wide-scale level can happen in an easier way. We are trying to create one clear, concise voice for the downtown community and the business owners to bring ideas and concerns to the table for the greater community. We would try to act as informational liaisons between anybody who has input for downtown, as well as downtown to anybody, including Silver City, and any other merchants that are down, or in the area, excuse me. We are hoping to develop a calendar of events that promote downtown businesses as well as other organizations in the area, including art councils and Main Street. If you would like more information about the Downtown Merchants Association, you can contact me at 534-0665, or you can email me at brendan@wellnesscoalition.org. Thank you for your time.
There's, next is Fay McKellmott, Comcast Cares Day in Penny Park Mural.
I just wanted to tell the council this evening about the great success we had at Comcast Cares Day this last Saturday at Penny Park. Comcast, the local Comcast organization chose the Members Region Arts Council's youth mural program to support as their annual community service project, and we worked with the town of Silver City, who built a wall at the new Penny Park that is specifically to be a mural wall, and we've worked with Alex Brown, who suggested that we do something that every child in Grant County could have a part in. And so the youth mural program, Diana Leba, who is the coordinator, has gone to Hurley Elementary, Harrison Schmidt Elementary, and Cliff School, and she had over 1,000 little clay hands produced of the handprints of those students, and last Saturday, those 1,000 hands were installed on that wall, as well, we had 538 people come out to have their hands made, and now those hands are going to be glazed and fired and also put on that wall. It looks like we're going to have to maybe extend the wall. It's not going to be big enough, but it's a first step in helping to bring back Penny Park. We also had a number of employees that helped to waterproof the fence that goes around Penny Park, and it was a, just a fantastic day. Lots of input from people as to how important Penny Park is and how important the youth mural program is, and they're happy to see the two come together. So I want to thank the town for their participation in that and just let them know how important it was to the community. Thank you.
Next is Johnny Trujillo, who references Hawaii Ice.
Hello, my name is Johnny Trujillo. I'm a city, I own a business in Silver City. It's located on 1200 and a half North Hudson. It's called Hawaii Ice. The business is on city easement. The business has been there for 27 years. I was told by Mr. Peter Russell that I was in a code violation by phone. I was told by Mr. Alex Brown that I was in a line of site violation. The city has never notified me or let me know of any of these violations. There's two other businesses located within the same general area that if there is a site violation occurring on my business, it should occur on two others. A year ago, I had a chance to sell the business. That's why I'm here. I talked to Mr. Alex Brown. He told me that if I could have Mr. Ninnich's property or Silver City Food Basket, if I could move my building into their property. I spoke to him, he said, "No, a liability." I tried other ways of going about this. I've owned the business for nine years. It was an investment at the time. I tried to work with Mr. Brown. I made him an offer to buy the business from me, or the city easement. I'd like an answer from the city on why they chose not to professionally notify me that I was in a violation. That's all I have.
The next item on the agenda is Council Comments. Counselor Edison, would you like to start?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to mention that I had heard that, as Ms. McKellmott had already mentioned, that the Comcast Cares Day with EMRAK and the Many Hands Mural at Penny Park had really gone very well, as did Earth Day with the e-waste recycling, and I want to thank everyone involved in both of those events. I'm sorry that I missed both. I was out of town, but I was thinking about it, and I noticed that I happened to be in Memphis at a conference, and I noticed when I was leaving on Sunday that they had a pile of stuff at their city government location of e-waste where they had been collecting for Earth Day as well. So it was nice to see that we're paralleling what other towns and cities are doing across the United States, so I was really pleased to see that, and once again, congratulations to everyone. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Counselor Cook?
Fay. The slabs that are at Penny Park, they were like, you could buy them. I bought one for my sister. They had cancer. Are there, are there some of them still left? I love the hands, by the way, but I just wanted to find out about the slabs.
I don't know about the slabs. I think that would be maybe a question for Alex Brown for when they rebuild the park for the contractor, maybe. The Arts Council wasn't a part of that, part of the project.
Oh, I didn't know that, because it was a long time ago, but I think the hand thing is a very nice thing. Am I allowed to comment on Main Street? In the microphone? That's not possible. No, it is. I am totally 100% in support of the downtown merchants that are getting together and organizing themselves. Of course, I am one, and I know all the reasons why they're organizing, and it would be really nice to see some changes. I'm all for it, too. I'm trying to remember decorum here.
Thank you.
I'm not sure. I think that should be all I say right now.
Thank you. Counselor Ray.
No comment.
Thank you. Counselor Maronis?
No comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll respond a little bit. Mr. Trujillo, we'll, I'll speak with the staff and figure out what's going on, and we'll see if we can find a resolution that's satisfactory to everyone, but the council, we set the laws, we don't, we don't enforce them, so we'll, we'll look into it and see what, what can be done as far as within the current codes. Counselor Cook brought up the Downtown Association, and I've heard rumblings of why the association is coming about. I, I think what was listed on some of the stuff that he does is duplicative of at least the mission of Main Street. I cannot comment on the effectiveness of, of either program, and I think when you start seeing these historically, when we see groups popping up and fragmenting is representative of some sort of unhappiness amongst a group, and that I would really hope that we could address the unhappiness and not just develop new groups that, that spread funding and other resources even thinner. The next topic, and I've received other comments on, on Friday night down at the corner of Pope, and I don't know why, but it sounds to me like the noise ordinance was violated from the get-go, and it should have been enforced. There, there is no 10 o'clock time limit on the noise ordinance. It's noise at any time that's basically offensive and leaving a property line, so we'll definitely look into that, and it is not my desire to repeat situations like that from what I've heard. I did not witness what was going on, but I've heard plenty of people, I believe, that are not associated with each other, that are telling the exact same story, and it is disturbing. And I think we, if we don't have a law that is covered, then we need to look at that. If we do, then we need to look at the enforcement of it, so we'll, we'll keep on it.
The next item on the agenda is any changes to the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to approval of minutes of the regular meeting, April 10, 2012.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I approve that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of April 10, 2012.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, April 10, 2012. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, April 10, 2012. Are there being no further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is reports, and we'll start with the Quarterly Visitor Center Report by Southwest New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce. Sissy, you have the floor.
Mayor, councilors, staff, and community, it's great to be here again. I always look forward to coming and sharing with you how things are going down at the visitor's center. We're very, very happy. We're getting great reports, and as this graph demonstrates to you, visitation is continuing to increase. If you'll remember, when I was here in January, we did have a dip in December, and part of that was due to the weather, and another reason was the cliff dwellings were closed. And that really does have a major impact, especially for people from the United States that stay in touch with travel. The people that we did have coming in, a lot of those folks were from other countries. They'd made their plans, and so they came anyways and were disappointed, but we worked with the visitor's center up at the cliff dwellings and managed to get people up to see the ruins up there, got them over to our museums, which is what we always do as far as trying to find ways of getting them to stay here longer and continue to get information and, and history about our area. This is another graph that's pretty interesting, because it's actually showing us what days of the week visitors are here, and Sunday is growing. We are starting to see more people. Saturday, of course, is our biggest day. One of our main concerns is we still have so many businesses that are closed on Mondays. And about two weeks ago, I was filling in for a volunteer that called in and couldn't make their shift, and I actually started calling around to some of the galleries and some of the shops to try to see if they couldn't be open, because we had a large group of visitors that wanted to see more, and we had very little there, and that's one of the reasons why we're gathering the data, is it's going to have to be, the proof is going to have to be in the pudding. If we can tell people visitors are here, hopefully we're going to start getting businesses, maybe that will shift their day off to another day so that we can make sure that we're handling as many visitors as possible and letting them experience our community. Other information that we're gathering is we're finding out where visitors are from. We've had visitors from every state except Hawaii, and I think probably within a day or two, I'll find someone from Hawaii and ask them to come in, so that we can say we've had people from each of the 50 states. This is very small, and I know it's hard to see, but we've had people from Australia, New Zealand. We have a lot of folks coming in from Canada, and of course, those are the snowbirds, more or less, and I, I'm terming the phrase flocking down here. We always see that, especially in January and the months that are very, very cold up to the north. We're getting a lot of people in from Minnesota, Michigan, Wisconsin, and a lot of it is because of the weather patterns. But then we've got people from Japan, Germany. We've got a lot of folks coming in from Germany, and part of what the county master plan was talking about, the economic plan, is that our Western culture is such a key influence to a lot of visitors that are thinking of coming here. So we even have some folks that are saying that Billy the Kid told them to come here. So it's one of those things where we need to continue to support our history and culture here. That's one of the key components of why people are coming here. As a matter of fact, right here, when we see the sites that people plan to visit, the number one is downtown, old town Silver City, the cliff dwellings, all of our different amenities, museums, the two museums are right up there on the top, and the catwalk, and then we've got more history, arts, and culture, and crafts, so really, it's such a So, really, it's such an important thing that we continue to work with the county and influence that scenic tours, the Trail of the Mountain Spirit scenic byways. All of this is very, very important and we're very proud of the way that we now have the visitor's center set up so that people can acquire the information they need and the materials and then go out and experience the area. We're also finding that people are starting to stay longer because they're realizing how much we have or we talked them into coming back at a later time because they're pretty overwhelmed that we have so much to offer. When we find out why people are hearing about us, and this is going to shift, when we talk about the marketing and advertising that's been going on, if you'll remember, the award came the end of, of July and it took a while to get the advertising up and going. It normally takes a couple of months to get the publications and the ads in and then it's normally about a three-month response time before people start coming. So, we're just starting to see the influence of all the marketing and advertising. I do want to mention, though, that our businesses are seeing an increase. The museum has seen, we, we don't have comparables from last year because we were not running the visitor's center, but the Silver City Museum has seen an increase of 18% in visitation. So, we feel that as the years go on, we're going to continue to see the influence of a very strategic marketing plan and a comprehensive program for tourism. But one of the key ways that people find out is about their friends. So, that's another thing that we want to be sure that when folks are coming here, they're having a good time so they can carry that message back. We are starting to get more hits on our website and I want to say right here and now that one of the reasons why some of the other businesses, including the other chamber, is getting so many hits is because of the great marketing that's going on. So, when you go out and you look for Silver City, we're all winning out on the internet because of the marketing that's taking place through the lodgers tax funds. Also, I do have a copy, we've gone to press on the new visitor and relocation guide and we're very happy about it. You can see here, we've got the bridge over the ditch, but we've got some great facts. We've got a very nice, clean look with the new publication. We've actually made arrangements. This is what will be getting sent out to visitors. We've got the bulk mail label on the back and what's great is through working with the postal service, we're actually going to be able to cut the rate down on this even below what it would normally cost to send out a standard letter for one of us citizens. So, this is going to be a great information piece to go out to folks. And last but not least, I want to talk about our great volunteers that we have. This is actually the welcome letter inside the visitor guide and rather than having it from the mayor, excuse me, mayor, town manager, we really wanted to, to be from the community and from the volunteers that are greeting people. And right here, you can see 14 of our volunteers outside of the visitor's center waving to people. And then the introduction, I hope you'll all come down and get a copy of this, it is available, going to be available electronically online on our website, but it mentions about the quality of our community, some of the respect that we have for each other, how we pull over when there's a funeral procession, or if there's two grocery carts or two cars pulled over in the street and people talking to each other, we go around. And talking about how we want people to just slow down and experience and enjoy the moment and that's what we do on a daily basis here in Silver City. That's what folks are finding when they're coming here. Another key component that I've spoken to you about that's really becoming very influential is the solar parking structure. We have information now about the recycling program and I think we're going to be really, especially with the information from real estate in here, starting to attract people that share a lot of our common values and I think that's going to help us increase our tax base. So, one other thing is in the New Mexico Magazine this month, there's an article, Silver's Magnetic Properties, and it's not talking about real estate, it's talking about the quality of life that we have here, the different restaurants, the different businesses and the different sites. And this is the sort of information that gets out. Doug Fine wrote this and it's third party, so it's, it's really great for us because this is where it's really going to start picking up, getting more people here and hopefully increasing our lodgers tax funding for the future. Are there any questions at all?
Questions? I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How are you counting visitors?
We actually count each visitor that comes in through the front door. We have a tally list, so we're counting, we're breaking it out between morning and afternoon and then we also break it out, of course, each day of the week. And so, we're counting each head that comes in, except if they've been out, what we're trying to do is get people to park at the visitor's center and then walk through downtown and loop around and come back across the Market Street Bridge. And if people are coming back in, a lot of times to use the restroom or just to say, "Thanks a lot, I had a great time," which we hear that, they're not counted a second time. So, these are actual people walking through the visitor's center and one thing we hear as soon as they walk in the door right now is, "Gosh, this is nice and thank goodness you're open," because there's a lot of visitor centers, especially on the weekends now. Even the state visitor's center down in Lordsburg is not open on the weekends. So, it's a huge service to people to be able to, to service them. We close at 2 o'clock on Sundays, but we have a notice that they can go up to the Silver City Museum and they'll take care of them until 4:00.
Thank you. I just comment on a couple of things. I, I think more importantly than even how did you find out about Silver City or what, what got you here is, the question that I ask visitors when I run into them downtown is, "Did you find what you expected?" Because I think it's critical and looking at the, the numbers, I've been here before, was pretty high on the list. And if we false advertise, that number will drop. So, I, I think it's important that we be real and truly advertise who we are and not who we'd like to be and try our best to get return. And Sissy's aware a little bit of this, but one of the initiatives that I'm going to push in this next year is that we have all these organizations that are working to support businesses, support tourism, that support this community, that we sit down and we actually identify what it is that each one does and does well, what they don't do, and identify any gaps that may be left out there in, in what we think is the overall system. And the other is to bring everybody into a, a very cohesive working environment that, that supports the tourism and the, the needs for business to, to be supported and the sharing of information and just truly benefiting each of the organizations and, and building themselves up to better fill the overall needs that we have for attracting and maintaining business and tourism in Silver City. So, that's the phone call that, that we missed the other day. And we're, we're going to work on it. I've spoken to Alex about it where we had actually had the same thoughts and I believe some communications of the same people and hadn't talked to each other. So, one, I think just the fact that we were working independent until we talked to each other shows some credibility in that effort. And I think bringing the community and all the groups together is just very indicative of Silver City and what we want to be.
I think the other thing we're real happy about, too, is we have a lot of community groups that are starting to use the back boardroom and that we do have a schedule, it's free of charge and that's really starting to fill a niche because a lot of the other businesses in town now are charging people if they want to use, even if you're going to have lunch or whatever there, they're charging people for meeting rooms. So, if ours is free, we're encouraging nonprofits to give us a call and to come in and use the conference room in the back.
Thank you. Counselor Madison?
I was going to read, Sissy, you had mentioned that Silver City Museum has seen an increase, about 18%. It used to be a long time ago that, you know, we would get, the University Museum would get phone calls and other, other types of venues, we'd get phone calls to give our, you know, statistics to try to see overall what was going on within the town. Is there any plan to do anything like that where there'd be at least some galleries on the list and some restaurants? Because I think one, one of the things that I see when I'm out is, you know, we see folks that we know that are local, many times they're bringing family members into the establishment that, you know, whether it's a museum or a gallery, just because they're visiting, they wanted to see certain things again or to local restaurants, but we also, they're bringing new friends. Or we see people that we haven't seen before and I try to go up and introduce myself, you know, and just see how, you know, how do they find Silver City, what do they think? And I think one of the things that I hear more often, not, I know as the mayor has and as you have heard, is how friendly everyone is, how we direct people and give them information about places to go, things to see, what to do. And I guess in doing that, I, I think it's, it behooves us to know how it's going, not just at the visitor's center, but across all these different places that, that are getting funding, that are, to see how things are tracking, to see, to see how we're doing overall and whether the folks that we're seeing up from the visitor's center, are they being seen in these other places around town?
Well, I, we will gather that information and I do want to mention that during College Avenue roadwork, we were sending, telling people, "Do downtown," and then we would send them on up Broadway, across Cooper, Black Street. We had the route all mapped out to get up to the University Museum because it was a challenge, not having College Avenue. But we do, we will be checking in with everybody and we're also starting to work with some of the hotels to put packages together.
Great.
To try to get people to, to come up and stay for more time again. We've got two groups, one of them is the BMW group, I think, that's coming in from Albuquerque in September and so they've been down already. We have groups that are coming to town ahead of time to plan things and then we're arranging with them to find where they can have their dinners, where they can come downtown. We're going to try to do another parade through downtown with all those custom cars. So, we are starting to get that sort of, I don't want to call it convention planning, but we are starting to get that activity. And I am going to pass this mock-up of the visitor's guide and actually, the county is really going to start marketing the convention center. So, I think that's going to work to our benefit as well. But the word is out, Faye's starting to get calls as well and so I think, you know, we're, we're going to start seeing things continue to increase. I think things have turned a corner, but now we just need to keep working it.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto other reports. Anita?
Public Works Director Peter Pena, can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
Yeah, you can hear me. Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
Can you hear me now?
You got to speak up.
Our Public Works Director Peter Pena received a call.
Is it on?
Oh. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Peter Pena, our Public Works Director, received a call from the New Mexico DOT informing him that they have contracted with Cutler-Pavy and they are currently working on a mail and overlay project on Highway 180 from mile marker 101 through 106. After completing that project, they will be going to TRC and doing a project there which should take approximately a month upon completion of that project. They will come back to Silver City and begin work on Hudson Street. DOT and Cutler-Pavy have a meeting scheduled tomorrow and they will be putting together a schedule on the dates, specific dates, and once Peter gets that information, he will relay it to Alex and the council and those dates will also be advertised in the newspapers.
That's one way to make an impression. I think we ought to thank Secretary Dominguez for doing Hudson Street again because I just, like, I mentioned it to him, I think in January, that it was in dire need of repair and he's already on it. So, he's, he's always been a good friend to Silver City and we appreciate that effort. Sayah, you want to give a report? You never come see us.
Just, Counselor Madison was asking about the status of College Avenue and Anita did notify me that they discussed it at the engineers' meeting and it is supposed to be done for the bicycles.
The College Street project, if you couldn't hear, is supposed to be done on schedule in time for the tour to Hila. And can you hang on, the legal department? Alex isn't here, we can, we can like to go crazy. I know Ann has something that she's wondering why I haven't read yet. She wanted me to remind everybody that I have several openings on the boards and committees for the town. The Grant County Silver City Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission has a one alternate. We have the Mayor's Climate Protection Agreement Citizens Advisory Committee. We are advertising for two members. We have the Museum Board. And looks like we have, I don't know how many we have, one opening? I haven't, let's see, can't even help me, can you? The Incentive Review Committee has openings. The Planning and Zoning Commission has two positions open. Lodger's Tax Advisory Board has one position open, which may not be after tonight. The Parks and Recreation Board has a big paragraph, has openings. So, please take a look at their, at them, they're advertised on our website and get involved. It's a good way to be involved and to help advise the council. Any other reports? Anything from the police department? Any other reports? The next item on the agenda is a public hearing entitled, "Approval/Disapproval of Restaurant Liquor License for On-Premise Consumption Only, License Application Number A808503. Applicant Name Laughing Tortoise LLC DBA Trey Rosat Cafe. Proposed Location at 304 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. The Town Council will serve as the hearing board and I as mayor will be the presiding officer. Have any members of this hearing board had expertise discussion with any person regarding the subject matter of this hearing or had any communication from any party to this case?"
Yes, sir. Regarding this particular... Yes, sir.
Seeing none, you're all qualified. Will all parties and witnesses intending to testify, including those staff members who intend to present testimony or who will be available for questioning, please rise, come to the podium to be sworn in by the town clerk. If you have not been sworn, you will not be permitted to testify or otherwise participate in this hearing. Can I have you be sworn in? Go now. You may be sworn out.
Please raise your right hand, repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, it was signed.
Do solemnly swear or affirm?
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That the testimony I am about to give...
That the testimony I am about to give...
In the matter before this council...
In the matter before this council...
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth...
Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth...
Under penalty of perjury.
Under penalty of perjury. The hearing will be conducted as follow. The applicant shall present their case. Next will come... to the application. Following the close of the applicant's case, witnesses in opposition to the applicant's case shall be permitted to testify, during the course of which the witness may address questions to any previous witness. But such questions shall be made through the presiding officer. The presiding officer shall have the sole discretion in directing the question for response, considering whether the question is relevant, is cumulative to other testimony, or is otherwise inappropriate. At the close of testimony against the application, the presiding officer asks the applicant, "Is there anything else you wish to be reflected in the record?" Sir, you have the floor.
Your question is, "Is there anything else that I want in the record?" Ah, no.
You may present your case.
All right. But just, we, this is the second time we've applied for a restaurant license and I'd just, you know, like to ask the town council to approve our license at our new location.
Come here.
Is that microphone on?
Yeah, it is. I'm just mumbled. Can you hear me?
We, that's better.
I'd just like to request that the council approve our application for a license on our 304 North Bullard location.
Any questions for the applicant? Councilor Maronis?
You said your new location. You had a liquor license, a restaurant liquor license at a different location?
Yeah, we had our restaurant license up at our North Cooper location.
And the only reason why you don't have that now is because you're not there?
We're not there. Yeah, state law means we have to apply at each location, so.
Any other questions? Councilor Ray?
It says here on your application that you are a member and a manager?
Yeah.
Who is the person, if I may ask, who is the person who owns this?
Ah, there's, there's, it's an LLC. We have four members.
So they're all people about the same as you, right?
What's that?
They all will be about the same as you?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does that conclude your case?
Yes.
Are there any witnesses in support of the application? Are you going to stand up and verbalize the thumbs up or do we have to guess? It doesn't translate well in minutes.
Thumbs up. No, we're really excited. The Ferraz out was an excellent addition to downtown in their previous location. They've done a great job on their new building. We're looking forward to having them down on Bullard Street. And I'd like to support their application for a liquor license.
Excuse me, it was just, who's a "we"?
Um, I, well, I'm speaking for myself personally in the downtown community, yeah.
Sorry, thought I'd ask.
Sure.
Mr. Scavon?
Have you gotten a business registration for your new location?
Yes.
Okay.
We, yeah, we got a registration and we are scheduled for all of our inspections as soon as we finish, including the fire marshal's inspection.
Any other questions? Are there any witnesses in opposition to the application? Seeing none, are there any witnesses for the, are there any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, does that conclude your case?
Yes.
Sorry. Go. Is the hearing board prepared to consider this application or render its decision?
Yes, sir.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Maronis?
I move for approval of restaurant liquor license for on-premise consumption only, licensee, application number A-808503. Applicant Name: Laughing Tortoise LLC, doing business as Trey Rosat Cafe. Proposed Location: 304 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico.
Councilor Ray, is there a second?
Yes, sir.
There's a motion and a second to approve the application. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second, no discussion, to approve the application for a restaurant liquor license for on-premise consumption only, license application number A-808503. Applicant Name: Laughing Tortoise LLC, doing business as Trey Rosat Cafe. Proposed Location: 304 North Bullard Street, Silver City, New Mexico. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and that concludes this hearing.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor?
I move for a short break.
Is there a second?
I'm sorry, I'm moving.
There's a motion and a second to take a short break. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're in recess. We will call this meeting back to order. And the next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of special dispenser permit application for the 17th Annual Silver City Blues Festival to be held May 25th through the 27th, 2012, at Golf Park, Silver City, New Mexico. Sponsor is Members Regional Arts Council. License holder, DBA Buffalo Bar, owner Sam Trejo, 211 North Bullard, Silver City, New Mexico. I tried to do that with some rhythm since it was about the blues fest. Fay, you have the floor.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have before you a packet that describes what we're planning for the 17th Annual Silver City Blues Festival this year, May 25th through 27th. Our license holder this year is the Buffalo Bar. And they are going to, they are scheduled to operate on Saturday from 1 until 9 p.m. and on Sunday from noon until 8 p.m. Do you have any questions about anything in your packets before you?
Fay.
Polly.
You have here, um, no wheeled vehicles in the park? Is that correct?
That's correct.
No bicycles?
Bicycles or skateboards. It's just too congested for that and it's too easy for people to get hurt.
Okay, all right.
You may.
Fay, I just want to say that I really, while it's separate from what you're doing in terms of the application for the beer garden, I am impressed that you're working, Emmerich's working with Puppy Dog Ranch to provide doggy daycare area for those folks that do bring their animals. Thank you. The town appreciates it and they know that many of the attendees appreciate it as well. Thank you for doing that.
Well, we're still working out the details, but we're hoping to, that it'll be a solution for the people who come from out of town and bring their animals and then aren't able to have them in the park. But of course, we always welcome service animals. Right. Thank you.
Any questions reference the application for the Buffalo Bar? You have the floor.
So the fence is the same as has been the past? How many feet high is it usually?
I'm not sure what the details are. He will submit his entire plan to the State Alcohol and Gaming Division and they're the ones that will approve or disapprove of his plan. So it has to be as high as they require it. It is, you know, it's a different license holder this year than I've had the last several years.
Right.
So I'm not exactly sure. He knows what the, what the requirements are and he'll have to fulfill them. And I'm not sure exactly how he's going to do that.
Okay, so he submits it with this application in terms of the fence height and everything?
Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Maronis?
More of a comment, but kind of reiterating what Councilor Madison just mentioned. Hearing from some of the programs, like the DWI program and everything, that you have been almost the benchmark for this type of permit. And they've really appreciated the work that you've done and what you've worked with. So hopefully this, the Buffalo Bar will do what it can to try to mimic what's done in the past.
And I am working with him and we've gone over all the details from the last couple of years. And he is, he seems to be heading in that direction. Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to discuss the application? Seeing none, just for the record, Buffalo Bar is the applicant and there are three reasons listed that it could be denied. And for only those three reasons, it must be explained. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
I move for approval of special dispenser permit application for the 17th Annual Silver City Blues Festival to be held May 25th through the 27th, 2012, at Golf Park, Silver City, New Mexico. Sponsor, Members Regions Arts Council. License holder, doing business as Buffalo Bar, owner Sam Trejo, at 211 North Bullard, Silver City, New Mexico.
Mr. Mayor, I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to approve the special dispenser permit application as published. Is there any discussion? There's a motion and a second to approve the special dispenser permit application as published. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Fay. Next item on the agenda is approval/disapproval of notice of intent, ordinance 1202, and ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to Quest Corporation, doing business as Century Link QC. Mr. Scavon?
Mayor, council, this has been a long time coming. This, these franchise agreements, this one and the one after with WNM Communications, will be finally formalizing the relationship of Quest with the town as a provider of telecom services, subject to the, to this franchise agreement and the town's municipal code. You have any questions, anyone?
Are there any changes that you'd like to highlight?
Uh, no. I can tell you something about the negotiation that began about seven years ago. But I'm sure you don't want to hear the full story. Basically, there's a move by telecom companies to take away the local rights of municipalities to regulate their own rights of way. This is pushes that come from both cable and from telephone. They seem to have softened their positions somewhat. Recently, Quest has merged with Century Link and an approach was made to them and they actually reacted favorably. Their first draft, I rejected. It was terrible. And in fact, the person that submitted it to us is no longer working there. The new group that came in to negotiate was much more easy to work with and we resolved it within two or three weeks of negotiating. I had also met with representatives of WNM Telephone Company and put the same changes in front of them and they went along with the changes as well. So the federal law requires that whatever you offer one telecom company and a franchise, you must offer the other, equal terms. It's supposed to be a neutral environment for competition. So you'll see that other than the name change, these two franchises are the same. The franchise fee will be 3%, which is, I believe, unchanged. And one area that I was, that I would like to highlight is that the, the franchise fee is calculated on gross revenues. The more things, the more income that you include in gross income, the higher the franchise fee would be. And since it's a pass-through basically to the user, the instructions that I received from both you and Alex Brown was not to insist on the broadest definition of gross receipts, which in effect will lessen the amount of franchise fees that the town collects. Some other communities like Santa Fe and Albuquerque are in litigation over the definition of gross receipts. And we chose to adopt a definition of gross receipts that's actually very similar to the friendly franchise of Farmington. So unless you have any other questions, that's about the story.
Councilor Madison?
Oh, I was just gonna request a consideration of a particular section, a change.
Go ahead and bring it up so we can discuss it before there's a motion.
Right, if that's okay. I'd like to discuss the change in Section 3 Restoration on the first line. I'd like to suggest the removal of streets and replace it with town's infrastructure. The first line of Section 3 Restoration, streets and removing, removing the word streets and replace it with town's infrastructure. So if any infrastructure is disturbed, I would include sidewalks, streets, curbs. I would make the same, the same motion.
Shall disturb any of the streets?
Of the town's infrastructures would I, like it's three.
Right, I'm just trying to think of some, streets or other infrastructure within the rights of way. So disturb any of the streets or infrastructure within the town's rights of way should be the insert. That would cover your concern.
Well, so what happens if they... I have to think about this for a minute.
This agreement applies to infrastructure that is in the, the rights of way.
Right, so is that redundant?
Huh? What we're talking about...
Isn't it redundant to say in the town's rights of way when that's all, it covers the town's rights of way?
Because you're talking about infrastructure, right? You're saying any of the streets...
The town's infrastructure.
What infrastructure do you have in mind?
As a...
Streets, sidewalks, curb, gutter.
Yeah, that's infrastructure.
A water line.
Yeah. Sewer line.
Then why don't we say including but not limited to and then list those things that you mentioned?
I can't, we just...
Why can't we just replace streets with town infrastructure?
Which is inclusive term.
Do that.
Thank you.
Thank you. It'd be the same that I would suggest for the next one, so that it'd be parallel.
Can you envision any objection from the other party?
No, just a question of what are you talking about? What kind of infrastructure are you talking about? Because this disturbs any of the town, let's say, the town's infrastructure, right? That's what you want to say?
Yeah.
Yes.
Now, what about the town's infrastructure that's not located within the rights of way? Because this is talking about streets and streets are obviously part of the right of way. What about infrastructure that's not within the right of way?
Well, that would be, that would fall under a different part of the code because this is addressing rights of way and their permission to use and maintain their facilities within our rights of way, correct?
Yes, that's what they're permitted to do. But if you say any of the town's infrastructure, this looks like it's, unless you say town's infrastructure within the rights of way, then you're making a blanket statement which might be construed to...
Well, that would be, that would fall under a different part of the code because this is addressing rights of way and their permission to use and maintain their facilities within our rights of way, correct?
Yes, that's what they're permitted to do, but if you say any of the town's infrastructure, this looks like it's, unless you say town's infrastructure within the rights of way, then you're making a blanket statement which might be construed to supersede the town's code because it could be the town's infrastructure of a, something that's not even in the, the right of way. It could be on town's private property, which is not right of way.
That's fair.
No, I mean, I thought it was clear that it was rights of, rights of way because you've got it in here under excavations, grant a franchise.
Yes, that's true, but.
Over and over again.
One at a time.
Yeah.
We're speaking about something that may be construed to go, to be conduct outside of the rights of way. So to make it clear.
That's fine.
I would suggest that we use your language, but then mention that it's within the town's rights of way.
Okay, fine. So exactly what would you like it to say? That's town's infrastructure within the town's right of way?
Correct.
Okay.
And then if they do damage outside of that, then it's just under the normal municipal code, not under the franchise.
Okay.
So both areas of Section 3 would be corrected, amended to read that.
We'll have to do that separately when we get to the next.
Right.
But we use the exact same language.
And if I'm correct, that's the only place where this particular phrase occurs because I went through it a couple times. That's the only place where streets shows up like that.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
I'd like to say something.
You have a thought.
So do I have this right, Robert, they're gonna pay 3% to us instead of the normal gross receipts, which is 7.35 I think right now?
No, no, this, this is totally, totally apart from gross receipts.
Okay, what's that, okay, are they paying us 3% to city, the town, Silver City?
Of their gross revenues, they will be paying the town of Silver City. Ostensibly, in small towns, that revenue that's collected is used for the maintenance of the rights of way. For, it's used for, it would probably go into Peter Pena's budget to help him regulate the right of way. In big cities, you know, like Albuquerque, that 3% of the gross revenue, they just throw it in their general fund. So yes, they will be paying 3% of the gross revenues to the town under this franchise.
Okay, why don't they pay like, let's say, what I pay as a small business owner, the same amount of gross receipts?
This is not gross receipts. This is for the privilege of operating on the town-owned streets and rights of way. It's like a license.
But it's, the number is figured on the amount on what they're, what they do as business here, correct?
Right, but that is not.
So it's just a tax named something else instead of gross receipts?
Well, that's, that's a, that's an argument that's been made before, that it is a tax, but the courts say, no, it's not a tax.
Um, are they the ones that are responsible for all the overhead lines they're going up all over town to? That look like we should have streetcars hooked up to them?
I don't know that.
It's getting, it's hairy. I mean, it's, there's a lot of lines over there.
You've got Comcast lines, you've got cable, I mean, other cable lines, you've got telephone, you've got power, and I don't know what else is up there.
Well, that's four, I saw two on a couple poles.
The highest lines are power. The telephone, I think, is, drops down to cable, to telephone and then cable. There's a hierarchy set by law that have to be X number of feet apart and in a certain order. So if you wanted to know which lines were going up, if it's the highest lines that you see proliferating, that would be PNM.
Yeah, they're thick black lines. You know, myself, I don't think Quest gives me good business, so I'm not really up for this at all. You know, I mean, I don't know, like, they don't have enough competition or something.
Well, WNM is the competition and you can get a dial tone with them, so if you wanted to try another company, I think you could call them and see what they have to offer.
This agreement and one argument regarding franchise fees is that the public rights of way are public property and they're being used by a private entity to provide a service to the entire community. And for their ability to provide that service, they need those right-of-way areas to run their equipment. What we're doing is saying, if you're going to use our public property for your private business, you have to basically rent that property, lease it from us for this amount. The amount is 3%. So they obviously pass it through to, to the consumer, but this is a, this does not support or go against Quest and their operations as much as it does in paying the town for their use of our right of way. Is that clear?
Yes, one of the things, state law says that it's up to them to regulate quality of service, not us.
It's up to Quest?
It's up to the PRC, the state government is the place that regulates rates, regulates the expansion of service and obligations to provide service, like in rural areas, that to revoke a permit, their, their right to serve New Mexico for quality of service issues. The area left for municipalities to regulate pretty much is the rights of way. And the trend, or we'll see what happens after this next presidential election, the trend will be to take away all the rights of municipalities to regulate their rights of way. That has been the trend for the last 10 years. That's what the lobbyists spend their money on because they don't want to have to negotiate with 150 different municipalities. They'd rather have something stamped out in Washington DC and make us all live by it. So we have been pressing rather strongly to have these franchises, which is another way of asserting our sovereignty and our right to regulate our own rights of way for our own public.
Um, one point and then a question. I just wanted to mention that in Section 3, streets shows up another time in there, it would have to say town's infrastructure. I don't think we need to repeat the rights of way again. It's down where it says.
On the third line from the bottom of that paragraph.
Thank you. And there's also an extraneous comma in the fourth line, the line above that, you need to remove the comma after town of Silver City because the sentence doesn't read correctly between the town Silver City shall. So I have to make sure we do that, but.
The, the suggestions that you're making are not material so that when we pass this, if you pass.
Well, the motion on the streets would be, changing up the term streets to town. Infrastructure is material.
I'm saying is that before we adopt, or you consider adoption of the final ordinance, which will be May 22nd, there'll be, I'm sure that we'll be able to clear up the commas.
Yeah. And one question, though. I noticed that it's a 10-year franchise agreement, right?
Yes.
And like, I think we did a 25 for PNM?
Every, and we did a five-year for Comcast last time. Everyone's different.
Okay, so I was just wondering that.
This is their, this is what they would like, that's fine with us.
Great, all right. I was just checking if there was an opportunity for the ability to capture it for a little bit longer or not.
10 years is what was negotiated. They could have asked for three. I would have consulted with the town manager and we may have rejected that, even to negotiate that. But 10 years falls in line with what most are doing in the state.
Thanks, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
I move approval of notice of intent ordinance 12-02 and ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to Quest Corporation DVA Century Link QC with the following amendments under Section 3 Restoration. The change in line one, removal of streets, replacement with town's infrastructure within the town's right of way. And then on the third line from the bottom within Section 3 Restoration, the replacement of streets with town's infrastructure.
Within right of way.
Do we have to say it again? Okay. Within the town's right of way.
Right of way.
Right of way.
Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, I second that motion.
There's a motion, second to approve the notice of intent ordinance number 12-02 as amended. Is there any other discussion? There's a motion, second to approve notice of intent ordinance 12-02 and ordinance granting a telecommunications franchise to Quest Corporation DVA Century Link QC as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I oppose.
Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of notice of intent ordinance 12-03 and ordinance granting telecommunications franchise to WNM Communications Incorporated. Mr. Scavran.
Again, the federal law requires neutral playing fields for competitors. This is the same franchise that is being offered to Century Link and I think that the changes suggested by Counselor Bedison are appropriate for this as well.
Is there any input from the audience? Any comments, input from the council? Entertain a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Move to approve notice of intent ordinance 12-03 and ordinance granting telecommunications franchise to WNM Communications Incorporated with the following amendments. Section 3 Restoration, second sentence, streets, removal of streets, replace it with town's infrastructure within the town's rights of way. And then in the same section, third sentence from the bottom of that section, streets, also replacement, removal and replacement with town's infrastructure within the town's rights of way.
Is there a second?
Mayor, second to that motion?
There's a motion, a second, is there any discussion? There's a motion, a second to approve notice of intent ordinance number 12-03 and ordinance granting telecommunications franchise to WNM Communications Incorporated as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval, disapproval of RFP 11/12-4P Audit Services. Anita?
Hey, Council, it is staff recommendation to award the proposal to Stone McGee and Company for a multi-year contract for fiscal year 2012 for a cost including, which includes grocery receipts of $45,000. Fiscal year 2013 for a cost of $46,650 and fiscal year 2014 for a cost of $47,950. And all costs do include grocery receipts.
Any discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, any discussion from the council? Counselor.
Well, it's always good to see more than one person apply, but at the same time, I'm familiar with Stone McGee. I know that they bring a battery of CPAs in and, and even though they've given us some clean audits, it's not from lack of looking. These guys are really searching deeply and they, they come in with a plethora of experience and a handful of CPAs and they watch it pretty good. I, I trust their audit reports.
Counselor Bedison.
I agree with everything that Counselor has to say. They, they really do put the town under a microscope and our, our staff perform very well and work very well with this group and I think they're excellent and I couldn't go wrong. Working with them again for a multi-year contract.
Anita, are we required to change CPA firms on an interval?
After 12 years, right now the rotation is 12 and two, so after 2014, we would have to contract with a different IPA.
Thank you. My only comments on Stone McGee is they have been on-time, efficient and very, very thorough and I appreciate that. Their efficiency keeps us out of trouble as well and continues our eligibility for grant funding. As we know, the CDVG, this year, if you're not up to date, you're not going to qualify and we will qualify. Any other discussion? Entertain a motion, Counselor Veronese.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of RFP 11/12-4P Audit Services per staff recommendation to Stone McGee and Company for fiscal year 2012 in the amount of $45,000, which includes grocery receipts tax. Fiscal year 2013 in the amount of $46,650, which also includes grocery receipt tax, along with fiscal year 2014 in the amount of $47,950, which also includes grocery receipts tax.
Just a second. Mr. Mayor, I'll second that. There's a motion, a second to approve RFP 11/12-4P where, per staff recommendation to Stone McGee and Company for FY 2012, $45,000, including GRT. FY 2013, $46,650, including GRT. FY 2014, $47,950, including GRT. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is approval of a letter in support of the Fort Silopetche casino efforts. Is there anybody in the audience from Fort Silopetche? No. The reason this is here is they presented it to me to sign on behalf of the town of Silver City and I did not feel that it was within the authority of my office to sign the letter on behalf of the town. So I informed them that it would be on the agenda tonight and it's here. They've, they've made great effort in trying to meet with the council and honestly, I have no stake in this. It just, personally or professionally, it doesn't matter to me whether they're successful. I, I think there's a claim of positive economic impact on the town of Silver City. I, I think that may be a far stretch to have a direct economic impact. I think whether there's an economic impact on the region, positive or otherwise, could definitely be debated. So I bring it for the pleasure of the council. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to comment on this? Seeing none, any comments from the council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Um, as I looked at this with similar thoughts to yours, I don't know if it directly impacts us positively or negatively. I haven't heard. and Hildago County is all in support, and I'm, I'm always in favor of helping out those, those counties, our neighbors, who do a tremendous amount of shopping and commerce with us, and in many cases, sometimes live here, even though that they may work in Daming and Lordsburg and such. So, if this would have any positive impact, as indicated by those municipal governments, I'm, I'm in favor of helping them out as well.
Any other discussion? Counselor Bedison.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm considering this. Unfortunately, I haven't had an opportunity to meet with the Fort Sill Apache tribe. When they were here, I was out of town and could not meet them on one of the days that was suggested due to my own prior commitments. But I do question the positive or negative impact on attracting terms in dollars directly to Silver City, but if we look at the overall southwest region and what it would do for our neighbors, as Counselor Rose has pointed out, I mean, it could potentially have a positive impact there as well, and I think if we, there's been many marketing strategies where we're working as a southwest region to bring in businesses, whether they be green businesses or other businesses for different parts of our southwest region, and I think this is one that needs to be considered. If it's something that's favorable to other counties in our region, we should consider it within that framework. And if approved by the council, structure a letter such that it reflects something of that nature, that we support our neighbors to the south and the region as a whole.
Counselor, ready?
One comment. I would like to see it happen here, if possible.
Thank you. Entertained a motion to write a letter of support in agreement with the discussion that has gone on regarding this letter. Counselor, Rose.
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval of a letter of support of the Fort Sill Apache Casino efforts as drafted.
There's a motion and a second to approve a letter of support as drafted and presented. Is there a second? Counselor Ray. There's a motion and a second to approve a letter of support as drafted and presented. Any discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor.
I can't support the letter as drafted. I'm sorry. As drafted, I don't think it reflects the discussion that we just had. I think it's, reflects something that I don't think, I can't support. I can support what I stated earlier, so I would, I would like to amend that, to state that it would be something that would support the southwest region rather than the statements in the drafted letter. I don't think, I think it would be best if staff or the mayor drafted something that reflected the comments that have been made by the council during this discussion.
Any other discussion from the council? Mr. Scavran.
In line with what you'd like to do, that if the motion maker wanted to withdraw his motion, the second went along with it, that a motion authorizing you to draft a letter consistent with the discussion would be enough.
I asked for it, but I didn't get it.
Well, you got a second chance.
Any other discussion, comments, action from the council? Seeing none, there's a motion and a second to approve the letter as presented of support for the Fort Sill Apache Casino efforts. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I'm going to go around this the hard way. Any opposed?
Opposed. Aye.
I need a vote from everybody.
Is it aye?
You are an aye?
Approve. I'm an aye for under opposition.
Okay, we have zero in favor. And four opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion fails. Zero to four. Any further discussion on this topic? Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I think it would be worthwhile at least seeing this gone forward in any way possible, along with the discussion that was presented. This letter is pretty close to what we discussed. It may not be, it may have some, some areas that need improvement, and I don't mind making a motion reflecting that, so... Mr. Mayor. I don't know what to do. You know, I, I'm going to defer to...
Counselor Bedison.
I move that we approve a letter in support of the Fort Sill Apache Casino efforts that reflects the discussion that was held by the council this evening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say something different. Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is appointment of one member to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. We have one application. The Chair of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board highly recommends this applicant, and I would like to appoint Catherine Gorthy to the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board if there is no objection from the council. Hearing no objection, Ms. Gorthy is appointed, and we'll send her the appropriate notice and put her to work very quickly. And with that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn.
I second the motion as stated.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.